Welcome, everyone, to the Joint Committee hearing of the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs and the House Committee on Agriculture and Food Systems. We have four measures that are referred to the Joint Committee, and so that's why we're meeting in combined session for this hearing. And welcome to Chair Gates, Vice Chair Kahaloa. Thank you for joining us in our committee room here. My name is David Tarnas, Chair of the Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee, and we have Vice Chair Takeyama here as well, and a couple of our members who have joined us, Representative Miyake and Representative Souza. And do you want to introduce the folks on your side?
Yes, for the Committee on Agriculture and Food Systems, we have Vice Chair Kahaloa, Rep Cochran, and Rep Ward.
Thank you very much. So today, just so allowing folks to be able to testify, if you could keep your testimony to about two minutes, and I'll ask you to wrap up. If you're testifying via Zoom, please keep yourself muted and your video off until you testify, and then turn it off again when you're finished. Use the chat function to communicate with the technical staff if you're having any issues. Don't send me a message on that because I won't hear it. And if you're disconnected, don't panic, just try to rejoin, and I'll bring you back on to testify when we can. If the power goes out and everything has to stop, we'll reschedule the hearing and post notification appropriately. If you're testifying via Zoom, please don't use any trademark or copyrighted images because that'll cause our feed to be kicked off of YouTube. So that's a problem. So please just use your own nice images behind you if you want to do that. And please conduct yourself with aloha, no profanity, or uncivil behavior. It's okay to disagree, but let's not be disagreeable. Thank you very much. We're all in this together. You help us do better work as testifiers, and so I appreciate all you being here today. Let's go ahead and start with our first measure, House Bill 1952 relating to medical cannabis. This measure amends the circumstances under which medical cannabis may be transported by and between dispensaries, requires the Department of Health to adopt rules. First up, we have testimony from the Department of Health. Welcome, please introduce yourself. The floor is yours.
Thanks, sir. Good afternoon, chairmen, vice chairmen, members of the committees. My name is Liam Gimmon. I'm with the Department of Health Office of Medical Cannabis Control and Regulation. We stand by our comments in opposition to this proposal, and will be available for questions if necessary.
Mr. Liam, if you could give us highlights of your testimony instead of just because some people don't read your testimony.
Sure, thank you, sir. We already have rules and regulations in place for inter-island and dispensary licensee-to-licency sales and transport. It is a difficult situation because whenever there is a transport between the islands, we involve the federal government. We would not like to draw light, undo regulations onto our islands, into our program. And then also, while we are in agreement that all products that are cleared by the government be allowed to be sold by the dispensaries, we don't want to be forced into allowing products, facilities to be sold without having rules and regulations in place.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have testimony from the Attorney General's office, Mr. Andrew Goff.
Good afternoon, chairs and members. My name is Andrew Goff for the Attorney General. As we noted in our testimony, there, I guess, is at least one legal issue that we pointed out here. The part of the bill that requires the Department of Health to adopt rules no later than nine months after a product is permitted to be manufactured and distributed pursuant to the statute. Now, that would be fine, but then the amendment goes on to read, "If no rules are adopted, dispensaries may distribute medical cannabis products in compliance with this chapter." The issue that we found with that sentence is essentially Department of Health has to promulgate rules regarding the products that are allowed to comply with the chapter. So if there are no rules, then allowing a dispensary to sell a product without rules would essentially violate the chapter. So if you remove that sentence, then that issue goes away, and you still have the requirement that the Department of Health promulgate rules within nine months. So I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. Please stick around because I'm sure we'll have questions. Next, we have testimony from Tai Cheng, Hawaii Cannabis Industry Association. Welcome. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, chairs. My name is Tai Cheng. I'm chairman of the Hawaii Cannabis Industry Association. We support, we submitted testimony in support of House Bill 1952. The information that was provided by the previous testifiers doesn't fully articulate the issues that are currently faced by the licenses when it comes to wholesaling, as well as to products that the legislator themselves have decided are reasonable for our patients. But yet, the Department of Health has decided to drag their feet on coming up with rules on whether or not these products should or should not be allowed. It is our assertion that the department should administer the rules, administer and create the rules, and they should not be taking the work of legislators in deciding what should and should not be done when the law and bills have already gone through the democratic process. I don't really have much to ask, but I'm available for questions. In particular, actually, the two issues that we face as licensees comes that the Department of Health has asked us to provide at least 30 days' notice for any type of wholesale transaction to occur. Whether or not it's inter-island or on island, it doesn't matter. We need 30 days' notice. And if we do ask for an emergency wholesale of products between licenses, we must provide reasoning. There's actually quite a long form that we must complete. It's been revised almost three times now, and this is information that the DOH is using to cover itself in case it feels that it's, you know, violating any federal laws. As well, when it comes to products, last legislative session, this House body and Senate have both agreed that some products, manufactured products, would be allowed, such as pre-rolls, which are pre-rolled cannabis products to be used for inhalation. These products were left out. There was actually a couple items that were left out by the Department of Health in its rulemaking power. I also remind the committee that the Department of Health has interim rulemaking powers, so it's able to come up with these rules quite quickly if it wants to. If it chooses not to, of course, it can take months for anything to get done. I'd like to stand by my testimony, available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cheng. Next, we have testimony from Jenna Matilla from Kyr, Oahu.
Aloha, chairs, vice chairs, members of the Joint Committee. Jenna Matilla, on behalf of Kyr Oahu, in support of HB 1952. You have our testimony before you, and we would just like to note that this is not in any way an attempt to subvert safety standards or safeguards. This is just a way to move forward the process that is currently in place and was made permissible in 2022 and 2023 by the legislature in a timely manner. Thank you for the opportunity. We'd like to also continue the discussion, so we ask respectfully that you please consider moving this.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Ann Chung, Pono Life Maui.
Aloha, chairs, and aloha, members of the committee. I'm Ann Chung with Pono Life. You have my testimony, and we stand in support of 1952. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we have Mr. Noah Phillips, Hawaiian Ethos. Ah, or his representative.
Hi, my name is Jeff Hong. I'm the Chair of Hawaiian Ethos. We stand by our testimony in strong support. I'd like to highlight some of the other testifiers. Of course, we want to produce safe and tested products, but as a business, we need a consistent regulatory scheme so that we can plan to invest. And this bill allows licensees to specialize and create both boutique products and products at scale so that we can specialize. And as an example, Ava was a boutique product that we were making into chocolates for anxiety relief, and that's something that the Big Island is a little too small to create at scale, and so this will give us the opportunity to have these medicines available statewide. I'll remain available for questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Jocelyn Moore, Big Island Grown dispensaries on Zoom.
Aloha, thank you so much for entertaining my testimony today. My name is Jacqueline Moore, CEO of Big Island Grown. I stand in support of previous testifiers that are in support of this bill. The only thing I would add, a couple things. First thing is, the legislature has already found merit and approved the wholesale process. We talked about the reasons why it was necessary to strengthen the infrastructure and allow this proliferation of state-regulated tested products within the dispensary system. So we already know that that passed. We also have a history of successful wholesale transports to date, completely without incident. While I can acknowledge and appreciate the Department of Health's efforts to curtail any kind of federal intervention in any way or scrutiny, I do think the 30-day window appears a bit arbitrary in nature. It also, you know, there is logistical and security components to it that I don't think are being considered when we're talking about delaying it by 30-plus days, so I wanted to add that. The other thing I wanted to say is, you know, when we're asking and advocating for pre-rolled flower, please remember that there are patients with debilitating conditions on the other end of, that are coming into the dispensary. The legislature has already approved flower for consumption in any manner that a patient sees fit for their condition and for what they're comfortable consuming. The legislature passed pre-rolls as a therapeutic product option last session. We are simply asking that in a timely manner, the Department of Health overseeing the health of patients in this system delivers on the intent of what was already passed so that the dispensary system can better serve patients. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. And we also have received testimony in writing in support from Bill Jarvis, Noah Botanicals, from Casey Rothstein, Green Aloha, and from Cards Pinter, an individual. Is there anyone else here or on Zoom that wishes to testify on HB 1952? If not, questions, members? First, judiciary. Any questions on our side here? Not? Chair? Agriculture? Rep Ward?
Thank you, Chair. The first gentleman, I think Department of Health, you were called the expert, I believe.
Yes, sir.
How much trade is going in and on between the dispensaries at this particular moment where this one gives you a green light?
Yeah, we've had, I think, five successful dispensary, or licensee-to-licency sales, maybe six. I'd have to give you an exact number, but just a handful.
Is that because of supply and demand, or what's the...
Yes, that's part of it. There is a necessary, there's a need for the products, and if there's a market for it, then that, of course, would alleviate and would give them a chance to do more sales. So it's market-driven.
Speaking of sales and the market, there's a rumor that the dispensaries are not exactly making money. Is it a fact that 80% of those with medical marijuana cards are going to the black market? And does that have an influential factor on what's going on out there?
I don't know the numbers for that, sir. I know that there is an active black market or a gray market, if you'd like to call it that. We are working to try to solve that and to get more of our patients to actually go to the dispensaries where they can purchase the medication that they know and can trust.
Well, the Attorney General's report said that we're going to reform them and take them from the black market to the legitimate market, which means there's quite a bit of it going out there. So in the profitability issue, if I was going to ask you for a balance sheet, what would you say is the state-of-the-art of the finances of the dispensaries which we created to facilitate medical marijuana?
I couldn't give you a number, sir.
Can anybody in your dispensary or other capacity indicate what's the state-of-the-art of the financial status of the dispensaries?
I can get you a gentleman in the back.
Could we focus on the bill, please, sir?
But the bill is related to these guys not making enough money, and they want to sell to each other, and I think it's very relevant, Mr. Chair, that we find out what the state-of-the-art is other than what rumors are that they're not making enough money, and that's why, I understand, there's a push for the legalization of marijuana. There's a gentleman in the back who raised his hand. Chair, if I may?
Tai.
Tai?
Representative Ward, your question is about the balance sheet of the licensees or how they're operating.
Profit and loss balance sheet, cash flow, whatever.
So it's similar to most markets. If you look at the mainland markets for medical cannabis, you'll see that at the beginning, when they first come online, patients have to deal with, you know, this illicit market as well as dispensaries. Dispensaries have to build up high cap, like very high capital costs to get up and running. As vertical licenses, we were required to outlay millions of dollars for cultivation sites before we even opened our retail locations. Retail locations may cost anywhere between $300 to $500 million to set up, but cultivation sites are about $1 to $2 million to set up for each one. For example, our cultivation site's about 60,000 square foot under roof that was newly built on agricultural land. We're at about $6 million that we put into the business so far, and no investment has been returned back to our investors. So we are profitable, we're cash flow positive, but we're not at a point yet, because of the medical market, that we're able to return cash back to our investors. And the reason for that is the illicit market. The illicit market continues to innovate, to provide delivery, to provide new products, and yet licensees are held to a high regulatory standard by a slow and bureaucratic moving Department of Health. It's their job, of course, to protect and ensure safety for patients, and we respect that, but also at the detriment of operators being able to get product to one another in a timely fashion. And so I would say that, you know, these type of laws, less regulation would help drive the price further down. Over the last three years, speaking for myself at Aloha Green, we operate one of the licenses here on Oahu, our prices have come down about 50%. So we're able to sell now ounces of cannabis for $128, $150, and that's very similar, if not comparable, to illicit and gray market pricing. And the only reason we're able to do that now is because we've invested $6 million into a 60,000-square-foot grow, where originally our grows were only 5,000 or 10,000 square feet in total canopy. We were only able to produce so much medicine, and so the supply was limited for a long time. At this current time, there is excess supply in the state among the licenses, and so we're able to meet the demand that patients have, and that's why you've seen prices plummet. And because of that, though, margins are also squeezed, as you know.
The difference between the black or gray market and your prices are how big?
Right now, there are almost, there is almost no difference now.
Almost no difference.
There's almost no difference now.
Of the $6 million you mentioned, is that debt or is that equity?
That's, some of it's, $6 million is equity. We actually have some debt outstanding as well, but it's all equity, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you break even yet?
Oh, yeah, we've been cash flow positive for a few years now, so we're okay. I do feel for my fellow licenses on the neighboring islands, though. It's a much smaller market compared to Oahu. Oahu, you know, we're lucky that we have the lion's share of the population living on this island, but my fellow licensee on Kauai, there's 30,000 people who live there. There's only about 400 patients that are registered for one dispensary, so that can be a tough go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, yes.
If you could stay up, I have a quick question. So Deal H mentioned that only five to six transactions are made under the current regulations. That's accurate to your...
From my understanding, yes, that sounds accurate.
So if this bill is to move, how does this bill affect your operations exactly? If you can give a brief description, quick elevator speech on how that would work for your operation?
Sure, I think, thank you, Representative Gates. One of the main issues that we have with not having more transactions is the fact that there is this kind of cooldown period that the Department of Health has put forward. 30 days, of course, we write down what we're going to sell. In 30 days, things can change in what could happen between the two licenses. And so we're just trying to make it so that it's much quicker for us to be able to move product between one another. At this current time, because there is this kind of cooldown period that we have to wait, we have to look at making sure we have product that fits our entire category. Some other licensees had mentioned how they would like to specialize in specific categories, such as the Big Island who have water extraction, they're using ice-water hash extraction, and how Big Island Grown has butane extraction, the only license to have butane. The fire departments here in Oahu are not as amenable as maybe our Big Island colleagues are, but if Big Island is able to move their solvent extract to the other island, that would be very helpful as well. As well, Big Island Ethos mentioned that they are using, they use water, they make water hash, and it's a beautiful product, it's a very labor-intensive product, it's very difficult to make in small batches or in a small scale to be profitable. And so it would, it would make sense if some of the licenses would be able to focus on their core competencies and produce at economies of scale. The only reason Aloha now, or Aloha Green's able to provide cheaper flower is because we have now one of the largest canopy grows in the state, and that's why we're able to drive our flower price further down. So I think it only makes sense to allow, instead of allowing, making the licenses as eight separate businesses that have to be siloed, we're now able to trade and barter with one another, and that will help and benefit patients at the end because they will drop prices overall.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a couple questions for the Department of Health. I can understand the frustration of the industry when, you know, Act 309, which was 2022, and Act 108, 2023, were passed by the legislature, and then Department of Health was to come up with rules to implement them, but I understand that that hasn't happened yet. So why is it taking so long to develop rules?
Some of the rules were specifically for the pre-rolls. It is a difficult proposition for the Department of Health because we've spent the last 50, 60 years being anti-smoking, anti-inhalation, so it is difficult to marry that up with the mission of the Department of Health and how we want to turn people away from smoking and inhalation. So there are some bureaucratic hurdles we have to go over, some things that are, been around for, you know, for decades that, you know, we have to overcome. around for, you know, for decades that, you know, we have to overcome.
This is the legislature that's decided this is the policy of the state.
Yes, sir.
Why is it taking so long? I mean, administrative, bureaucratic inertia, because you're used to doing something a different way, isn't adequate of a reason for such a long delay. What can be done in order to move this forward? I mean, this bill is proposing basically to say, if you don't do rules, they can sell anyway, but we've got this challenge that the Attorney General said, but that would place the dispensaries in jeopardy because they're selling something that's not allowed.
Correct.
And so the only reason why they're in this position is because DOH hasn't developed the rules yet. What can happen so we can get these rules promulgated?
We can continue to work on them and, you know, get them through.
2022 is when 309 was passed, and 2023 was last year. So, you know, it's just, it's unfathomable it's taking so long. This is what gets people frustrated and trying to circumvent the rulemaking process. Rulemaking is essential, and I'm just expressing my frustration because I think that lots of people feel frustrated that it's taking so long.
Yes, sir.
Other questions, members? On your side?
I'll just ask a follow-up. Follow-up for that. So with the rules taking so long, does the department have timelines on how long rules generally take so that our advocates here have an example of what may be lying ahead for them? Because right now, it seems like there's just an endless waiting game, and DOH isn't getting, giving any clear answers on when we should be expecting that.
Yeah, I couldn't give you a goal or timeline for it, other than that we will work on it and get it done, and done as quickly as possible, and thank you for your support for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chair, we go on? Is there something that's?
A rules question, but is I, or kind?
Okay, if you would, please.
Please give it brief.
Yes, quickly, sign. Do the rules say you can buy out another dispensary? Question, yes or no?
No, we can't purchase another dispensary. No, cannot.
Okay. The other follow-up, what is a pre-rolled cannabis flower product?
Oh, so currently, we already sell dried flower.
Is that a joint or what?
It is, it is colloquially smoked as a joint. So it'd just be easier for a patient, instead of having to roll their own joint, which they do, to have something pre-rolled for them.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for my negativity.
Some patients don't have the manual dexterity to roll a joint, so that's why they want to buy pre-rolled joints.
I see, that's the logic.
Okay. There being no further questions, let's move on to the next measure, House Bill 2443, relating to medical cannabis, repealing the sunset date of the authorization for primary caregivers to cultivate medical cannabis for qualifying patients, and clarifies that primary caregivers may continue to cultivate medical cannabis for qualifying patients subject to certain restrictions. First up, we have testimony from the Department of Health. Welcome, please introduce yourself. Floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee, excuse me. My name is Kyle Brandt. I'm the Patient Registry Supervisor for the Office of Medical Cannabis Control and Regulation. Stand on support of our testimony. I'm available for questions.
Want to summarize your testimony, please?
Yeah, we support, excuse me, a little nervous.
It's okay, we're all just regular folks.
We support lawful and safe cultivation for patients. Primary caregivers are a way to do that. Currently, at the end of the year, they would not be able to do that any further, so we support ending that sunset.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Next, we have testimony from Mr. Tai Cheng.
And Chairs and Committee members, thanks for accepting my testimony. I stand by our written testimony. The summary of our testimony is that we stand for home grow, we stand for personal grow. People should be able to grow medicine and plants that suit their needs and particular requirements. We think that it's high time that, pun intended, that the Department of Health should address the issue of caregiver grows that are large and commercial at scale, but of course, there are reasonable times when we have cooperatives or collectives of five patients or maybe more that could grow and provide much-needed medicine. As dispensaries, we try to meet the market and grow what sells to the patient, but that doesn't mean that we can grow and sell everything that every patient requires. So we support this measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have written testimony in support from Casey Rothstein with Green Aloha, Karsten Walker, and from Luan Mahiki Langford Fabrito. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure, HB 2443, either in the room or online? No? If not, questions, members? First judiciary, anyone questions on this measure? If not, over to you.
Questions, members? Seeing none?
Okay, let's go on to the next measure. HB 2444, relating to criminal history record checks, authorizes the Department of Health to conduct fingerprinting and criminal history record checks of applicants who apply for a permit to operate as a hemp processor. First up, we have testimony from the Department of Agriculture. Welcome, please introduce yourself. The floor is yours.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs and Members of the Committee, Leo Obaldo, Hawaii Department of Agriculture. We stand on our written testimony, offering comments, and the comments are that the Department regulates growing buffer zones and transport of hemp materials, but the Department of Health regulates hemp products and processors. So we would like to defer comments of the Department regarding the requirements of hemp processors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Department of Health.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. My name is Greg Edwards with Department of Health, Office of Medical Cannabis Control and Regulation. We support this measure. I will briefly summarize. Act 263 last year requires those that want to obtain a hemp processor permit to come to the Department and apply, and there's, they have to pass a background check. There's two ways they can do that. They can already have a USDA growing license, again, issued by USDA. If they do not, they can consent to the Department of Health to conduct the background check. However, the necessary statute wasn't amended, that's 846, Section 846-2.7, that would then give the Department that authority to conduct that necessary background check for those that do not have a USDA growing license to grow hemp, right? Again, this is for processing. We are proposing replacement language to what is in the bill right now. The reason we're doing that is because FBI controls access to the database to do these background checks. They have to approve the statutory language in Section 846-2.7. We submitted the language that you see before you in the bill. It wasn't reviewed at the time that, you know, it was submitted, they hadn't completed their review. FBI came back, FBI came back with their decision about a month ago and said it doesn't pass. So we're using language from another bill, HB 1782, and we're moving that into this and proposing this replacement language, which is what you see before you in our amendments. Available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Luan Mahiki Langford Fabrito in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure, HB 2444? If not, questions, members?
Seeing none on my side.
Okay, just real quick question to the Department of Health. So were you able to run this new language by the FBI to see whether or not this satisfied them?
As it's explained to me, we can't run the new language by them in this measure, but we did ask them to review the language in HB 1782, which is why we are using that language in this one. So we have a couple of vehicles. We have HB 1782, we have this one, and we have a Senate bill also that we've proposed the same amendments. The hope is their review will come back, we asked for an expedited review, that the language will be satisfactory to them.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other questions?
Chair.
Report?
Thank you, Chair. Same gentleman, very quickly, this basically is a housekeeping measure, then. Is there anything more into it than that?
No, correct, it's conforming to 846-2.7 requirement. Yes, it's housekeeping, it's something that was missed last year.
Where does the blame result on the last year foible? I mean, was it the way it was written, the way it was finally passed?
It would be speculation, to be honest, you know, the department's role last year in amending 328G, which was Act 263, was to set up a permit processing system, moving from a registration to a permit system for hemp processors. Part of that was allowing or requiring background checks. To that end, we agreed, the department agreed that background checks would be necessary. The legislature gave us that authority to conduct those background checks. I don't know why this other statute, Section 846-2.7, wasn't amended properly.
When will the FBI get back to you, and is it before CNADA of this legislature?
The, it took about eight weeks when we submitted the request for this measure that you see here, this bill, and when you submitted to FBI about eight weeks ago, well, a little over eight weeks now, they got back to us about three weeks ago. So it took about eight weeks for them to get to us. What we've been told is it can take several months. We've asked for an expedited review, so we're hoping they're going to get back to us as soon as possible.
Not ingrating. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything more on HB 2444? If not, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure, which is the last measure where it's a joint referral to JHA slash agriculture. HB 2445, relating to the testing of cannabis and manufactured cannabis products. It requires the Department of Health to implement a post-market testing program to verify the labeling on cannabis and manufactured cannabis products and monitor the shelf lives of cannabis and manufactured cannabis products. First up, we have testimony from the Department of Health.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee, Liam Gimma from Department of Health, Office of Medical Cannabis Control and Regulation. We stand by our written comments on this bill. It's written out in basically what you just told everyone, sir.
Anything else to add from your testimonies, if people don't get a chance to read it?
No, it will give us a chance to be able to see how shelf life is affected with our medical cannabis products, make sure there's no deterioration, make sure that our patients are receiving the finest quality of medical products.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have testimony from Tai Cheng.
Chairs, Committee members, thank you. You have my written testimony. We oppose House Bill 2445. I would remind the Committee that the rules that the Department of Health implemented to do relabeling and testing came out in August of last year. Took them about six months at that time to come up with rules. They didn't include everything, of course, in those rules that we've discussed today, but there were rules, and they are able to come up with interim rules. In these current rules, they treat cannabis in their testing requirements, they take guidance from the FDA. Cannabis, we remind them, is neither food or drug under the FDA, and that currently the rules require all licensees to hold two reserve samples of every single batch and product packaged for one year beyond the expiration date. So if you come to our facility, you'll see a vault. In addition to the product that we sell to patients, we have two packaged products that are being held beyond the expiry, which is sometimes a year. So for two years at a time, we're holding them in our vault. The Department of Health is welcome to come at any time to test that product and take that product to check if it conforms with the requirements of the labeling. In addition, the labeling, we've had about a year now where we've been working with the Department of Health hand-in-hand to get these labeling requirements met. There is still a bunch of pukas in this labeling that requires information that has not helped the patient, but does take up valuable space on the labels themselves. And so we ask that before the Department of Health asks to do additional testing and then conform labeling, that they fix the labels and they fix the issues that are there, and they also work on their slow bureaucratic process that they take to come up with new rules. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Casey Rothstein, Green Aloha. Is there anyone else in the room or on Zoom wishing to testify on HB 2445? If not, questions, members? Judiciary, questions? I have a question, but let me turn it over to you first.
Members, any questions from Agriculture? You want to answer your question?
Go ahead.
Okay, report.
Okay, thank you. The gentleman from the experienced dispensary.
Yes.
What is the generally accepted shelf life of cannabis? Is there a generally acceptable shelf life?
So that's a good question. It depends on the product that we're providing. Already, all product must be tested by a third-party laboratory before it's sold and packaged. Currently, we have things called water activity that measures the amount of water that is active within the product. The lower the water activity, the least risk there is for any kind of mold or bacterial or kind of, you know, fundamental growth that's occurring inside that product. For flower itself, when it's packaged and put into its containers, you're looking at about six months, but manufactured products can last much longer just because they've been purged of all other extraneous, you know, any kind of potential contaminants and are really the purest form of the product. When it comes to some of the edibles, though, because some of them don't have preservatives and some of them do, depending on if it's kept outside or in a shell, you know, in a refrigerator or not, then that can also vary as well. But all products are marked with expiration dates, which are agreed upon by each of the licensees.
So it's the contamination issue, not necessarily the THC going down?
No, that's right. So I think the Department of Health is most worried about that once the product is packaged and then it goes out, after it's tested, that some point in time between the time it was packaged and the time that it's sold or on the shelves, that there could be some type of marked difference happening there. But there won't be any new chemicals that are going to show up in that product. There's not going to be, you know, there could be, you know, mold and mold or yeast that could contam, just like any, you know, drug has an expiry or any food could mold or spoil. That's kind of what I think the Department of Health is looking at.
So generally, it's six months as a rule?
Six months to one year, I'd say. There's no, no products are beyond one year, I think, right now.
Something doesn't sell in six months.
Yeah, that's right. So we don't even, we don't even really have that problem right now with the supply here in Hawaii. We're not seeing, you know, products on the shelf for beyond six months at a time. We, because of the size of the grows currently in the cultivation, it really is just-in-time inventory for many of the licensees growing and then selling what they have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Department of Health, question for you. I cannot understand why you need to set up this whole program that's proposed in this post-market testing program verifying label manufactured cannabis products when you, we've got these two packaged reserve sample units for every manufactured cannabis product and every packaged flower that is held by the licensees. Is there a reason why you can't just use those?
There is, sir. Those are usually in reserve, or if there's an outbreak or if there's an adverse reaction, gives us a good chance to send something back to labs. We also want to see what is actually put on the shelves and actually is in the dispensaries that will be handled by the employees, the patients, whatever. You know, these samples that are kept, the two samples are usually kept in a back room, dark conditions, in a closet, something else, not real-life kind of situations. So a post-market-
Do you have evidence that, and concern that you're seeing deterioration?
No, but we would like to have some good data to support that or not support that. We don't like to, you know.
Did you ask the dispensaries to provide any information that might provide, you know, this needed data?
No, I don't think that they are doing any post-market testing either or testing of products of age.
Okay.
And this is a usual, usual act of medicine pharmaceutical companies, there is a usual post-market testing of these, of products that are put on shelves.
I understand, yeah, but I'm also understanding that you're applying things to this industry which this is not a pharmaceutical.
It's a medical product, though, sir.
It is a medical product.
And we do like to treat it as a medical product, and that's, I think that's important to understand, that-
I get that.
People are using this to treat their symptoms, so.
I understand, and that's, that's why there's this-
Yes.
This challenge here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, there being no further questions on these four measures, what I'd like to do is go directly into decision-making. I want to assure everybody that all of your testimony has been circulated to all the members in both committees so that they've had a chance to read it, not just what we've heard today, but, so your testimony, though, has been very helpful. First up, on House Bill 1952, after discussion with my co-chair here, this was, this was a tough one because I share the frustration of the industry that the rules are taking way too long, and I expressed my frustration, and I, this is the first time the judiciary has actually been on a referral for a medical cannabis bill, and so I will remain engaged with it and try to do everything I can to help DOH move forward on these rules. I understand you've got some cognitive dissonance within the department because of what we're requiring of you. That being said, I'm also very concerned that by passing this bill as is, we would be creating a legal jeopardy for the- be creating a legal jeopardy for the dispensaries as outlined by the Attorney General. And I don't want the dispensaries to be in that situation, which, and so, my recommendation is to take the, is to pass out a House Draft One with technical amendments. I want to defect the effective date to the year three thousand, which, by the way, is done in order to continue work on this bill because it's not finished. It's going to go through many more committees and this is still a work in progress. And I want, I would like to recommend that we take the Attorney General's recommendation to delete, I know, a key provision that the dispensaries want to have in here, but I think we should delete it because I don't want to put you into legal jeopardy. And that deletion would be the phrase, if no rules are adopted, dispensaries may distribute medical cannabis products in compliance with this chapter. I just don't want to mislead you as dispensaries, that you can do this and, and think that you're being in compliance with the legal and regulatory framework of the state. I want to work with you, but I think we need to do something different. So that's my recommendation. HD one, tech amends and the Attorney General's amendments and effective date in the year three thousand. Questions from judiciary, comments? You want to ask, if there's questions on your side?
Members, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none.
Okay, if not, I'd like to go to a vote. Vice Chair Takayama.
Voting on House Bill nineteen fifty-two, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Evslin?
Aye.
Representative Ganadin?
Aye.
Representative Holt?
Aye.
Representative Ichiyama, excused. Representative Iligan?
Aye.
Representative Kong?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
And Representative Souza?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the Committee on Agriculture and Food Systems, same recommendation. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB nineteen fifty-two, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Both Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Cochran?
Aye.
Representative Lowen?
Aye.
Representative Perusso, excused. Representative Woodson, excused. Representative Ward?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to House Bill two four four three, on this measure, I think it's pretty straightforward. I'd like to just make some technical amendments, so my recommendation is to pass out an HD one only with tech amendments. Keep a clean date. Questions or concerns, members of judiciary? Want to ask if there's questions?
Uh, members, any questions, concerns? Seeing none.
Okay. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill twenty-four forty-three to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Ichiyama. Any members wishing to vote with reservations or no? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the Committee on Agriculture and Food Systems, same recommendations. Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB two four four three, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, seeing the, noting the excused absence of Chair Perusso, Representative Perusso and Representative Woodson. Any members voting with reservations or no? Noting that, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to House Bill two four four four, my recommendation is to pass out a House Draft One, making some technical amendments, also defecting the effective date to year three thousand, and taking the Department of Health amendment as recommended in their testimony. Questions or concerns, members of judiciary? Any questions on?
Any questions or concerns, members for Agriculture? Seeing none?
Okay. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill twenty-four forty-four to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Ichiyama. Anyone wishing to vote a r or no? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
For the Committee on Agriculture and Food Systems, same recommendations. Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Voting on HB two four four four, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Perusso and Woodson. Anybody voting no or with reservations? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, House Bill two four four five. I have to admit, I'm still not convinced that you need this because you've got those reserve samples and you haven't really tried to work with the industry to give you the data you need. I, I recognize the challenge that you face coming from a food and drug kind of approach and that you consider this a medicine, so you want to apply all the things to it that you would to a pharmaceutical. I would just like you to try another means of doing this, either through using the samples that they keep or working with the industry to try to get the data you need. I appreciate you're trying to protect the consumer, but I just think that this is onerous and it's already burdensome. The regulations that they've got already, so I just don't want to add to it. So my recommendation is to defer this measure. I just don't think it's necessary at this time. Okay, I think at this point, we're going to-
Chair, point of, point of order, please. Your deferral, according to Senator Ihara, has to have a unanimous consent.
Uh, I, I explained my reason for a deferral and if, I've asked, is there any, any comments or concerns from the Judiciary Committee?
Any comments, concerns from the Agriculture Committee?
Well, the concern is that we procedurally don't do what we've done in the past, and that is have a unilateral deferral of Chairs to say, I defer, as we know somebody from, always said that, and he's in prison right now because of the temptation.
Mr. Representative, I am-
The point, the point is this, the rules according to-
I am following the rules.
The, the rules of Mason, of which we follow, say that you cannot do it without unanimous consent. If anybody objects, you should take it to a vote. In other words, we vote for up, we should be voting for down. That's the point. It's, that's the way democracy is. Not just one person says no and everybody just follows along. That's my point. That's my objection. Let us proceed.
Thank you. Okay, there being no further measures before this joint committee, I'm going to take a brief recess so that you can go off to your other committee meetings and then, in a few moments, we will reconvene as a Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee. Brief recess.
Briefly summarize that in total, the judiciary requests supplemental operating funds for FY25 in the amount of 3.24 million and 4.5 new permanent positions. We further request 17 million for capital improvements, of which 3 million in operating or A funds and 14 million in bond or C funds. Requests for operations briefly include 1.19 million to cover a significant increase in electricity costs, 530,000 to increase compensation for court reporters, 170,000 to implement Act 159 of last session, in part by modifying the judiciary information management system, and 137,000 to establish an operating budget for the Ola Hauai program. We also request restoration of 882,000 for 14 positions that were defunded early in the pandemic and 4.5 new permanent positions in areas of emerging needs. For capital improvement projects, we request a total of 17 million again, specifically funds for Ka'ahu Manu Halei in First Circuit to upgrade and modernize four elevators that are 40 years old, to build out a new courtroom at Hoapili Halei on Maui, to separate storm drainage and sanitary systems in the Kapua Iva building on Oahu, and for lump sum bond and operating funds to address continuing and emergent facility needs. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. I appreciate you sticking around. There may be some questions, but I do appreciate the briefing you gave to Finance Committee. It was very thorough, and I certainly reviewed that in detail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else testifying on House Bill 1911? If not, questions, members? Vice Chair Takayama.
Mr. Kamora. Just a question. How many funded vacancies are there in judiciary at this time?
Funded vacancies? May have to refer to our HR director if he has the number. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair members. I'm Eric Tanigawa, HR Director. So the number that I have is as of 11:30. Funded vacancies in terms of position count is 201.9.
As I recall, that's similar to what your situation was last year. Are you making strides towards filling those vacancies at this time?
It's fairly close, and we have undertaken efforts to try and fill our vacancies, a multifaceted approach.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions on the judiciary budget? If not, thank you very much. House Bill 1912 relating to judges for the District Court of the First Circuit establishes one additional District Court judgeship in the First Circuit. And for this, we have Michelle Acosta from the judiciary. Welcome. Floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Michelle Acosta, I'm the Deputy Chief Court Administrator for the First Circuit. We submitted our testimony in strong support of this bill. In brief, this bill would establish the 15th judge in the District Court in the First Circuit. We do require the statutory amendment to establish that position. Last legislative session, we were grateful for the appropriations, which funds this position, so we just need the authorization now to establish. Good judge. Thank you.
Thanks for that explanation. Okay. Any other person wishing to testify on House Bill 1912? If not, questions, members? So just to make it clear, as Ms. Acosta said, we've already funded it. We just need to pass the statutory authorization for this position. That's what this is. Okay. Moving on, House Bill 1913 relating to compensation for court-appointed representation. This increases the rate of compensation and maximum allowable amounts per case for court-appointed counsel and guardian ad litem in family court proceedings. Appropriates funds, declares appropriation exceeds the state general fund expenditure ceiling for 2024. I mentioned this is family court. The next measure is criminal court. So they're two different courts. It's got the same title, but please don't be confused. Okay, so this one is family court, so it's to increase compensation and maximum allowable amounts per case for court-appointed counsel and guardian ad litem in family court proceedings. First up, we have Matthew Viola from the judiciary. Judge Viola, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. I'm Matt Viola. I'm the Senior Family Court Judge in the First Circuit. This is a, this bill is part of the judiciary package, so not surprisingly, we're in strong support. We have a small, and I think it's fair to say dwindling, number of people who are willing to serve as court-appointed attorneys and guardians and litem across the board in family court cases. I think the problem is particularly acute in our child abuse and neglect cases and our juvenile law violator cases. I think one of the reasons is the relatively low pay. This bill seeks to amend HRS Section 57187. That's the statute that sets the statutory rates for compensation. That bill, since it was enacted about 37 years ago, has been changed once in 2007, so it's been about 17 years since the compensation rates have been changed. We think one of the ways that we can increase the number of people who are willing to serve as court-appointed counsel and guardians ad litem in our cases, which can be very difficult, is to pay them more, and that's what this bill does. So thank you for the opportunity to testify on this. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Judge. Next, we have Darcia Forrester, Office of the Public Defender. Welcome. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Aloha, members of the committee. So I'm here in my, the capacity as the family court supervisor at the public defender's office, which includes the domestic violence division under the family court and the juvenile division in the family court. And so first, I wanted to say that this rate increase is necessary to ensure the quality and availability of attorneys willing and able to provide these services across the state. Right now, specifically in our juvenile division, the available qualified attorneys to do juvenile law violations is very small. They're very dedicated, but the list is shrinking. And we've tried to recruit attorneys who maybe have left our office or who we know have knowledge, specialized knowledge in juvenile law violations, and we're just hearing that it's just not worth their time because they can get paid higher doing other jobs. And juvenile law is very specialized when it comes to criminal charges. I have no knowledge of GALs. That's not something that I'm involved in.
That's a guardian ad litem.
Yeah, that's a separate issue, which I don't have any knowledge of. But when you, when a young attorney in our office wants, moves into our juvenile division, they literally have to learn a new language because the language of juvenile law is so different from any other criminal law in the state. And it's time-intensive. You have to do a lot more homework, and you know, kids do things like run away, and then they get picked up, and the schedule is very unpredictable. So finding good attorneys who are willing to do these cases is difficult. So we do ask that this bill, this measure, be passed because I do believe it will help us recruit more people to join the list who are qualified. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in support from Kathy Betts, Department of Human Services, and testimony in support from Sean Hartlieb. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on House Bill 1913? If not, questions, members? Yes. Sunny Ganneden, Representative Ganneden.
Oh, yes. It's Ms. Forrester. Sorry for making you walk all the way back up.
I thought you were going to call Judge Viola.
Ah, that would have been too. Just a couple of quick questions to follow up. Can you explain to the committee the process by which a court-appointed attorney gets paid? I mean, I do, so it's, my understanding is it's a filing a motion with the court that appointed you, approval by that court, which might take weeks, the attachment of an hourly worksheet, which can be disputed, and then reviewed again, and then waiting for a paper check. Is that still the process?
I cannot answer your question because I've never been a court-appointed attorney, so I am actually unfamiliar with the logistics of getting paid. I do know how to do the order of appointing them because that's something that I'm responsible for, so that they can attach that to the paperwork to then get paid. But beyond that, I am so sorry. I am not familiar with that process intimately.
May I, Chair?
May I ask a question of the Honorable Judge Viola of the First Circuit?
Judge Viola, please join us at the podium.
Sorry.
I think Representative Ganneden is a little nervous to ask you a question.
I would be surprised at that.
Yeah, may it please the court.
I, yeah, basically what you said. The Office of the Public Defender actually does the process of selecting the conflict counsel when they have a conflict in a case, and then they'll be appointed, will sign the letter of appointment, and then they'll do what the lawyer does. Well, they're required to keep track of their hours. Once the case periodically, or once a case is complete, they submit a bill. Our fiscal department will review that bill just to make sure that it's accurate to some extent, but also to make sure that it conforms to the record. You know, they're, make sure that if you're billing for a hearing, attendance at a hearing, there was actually a hearing on that date. Typically, that bill will come to my office, we'll do another review, and as long as it matches up, I'll sign off on it, and it'll go back to our fiscal department. At that point, I'm out of the picture, but I'm pretty sure you get a paper check still.
Would it, would it be fair to say, Your Honor, if it takes around eight to 10 weeks for that process to happen?
You know, when I get the bills, I turn it around that day if I can. Wouldn't surprise me, maybe a little bit shorter, but I couldn't answer that question really specifically, but that wouldn't be completely out of the picture, I think.
And a brief follow-up. For the members of the committee, how long do these cases last in duration? So of course, juvenile cases are different from adult cases. Oftentimes, when you have a trial or a change of plea in a juvenile case, the, as Ms. Forrester noted, the client keeps returning to the court. How long in duration is the attorney sort of, I guess, locked into this case for?
So I think it's kind of important to make sure that we're talking about, these are the juvenile law violation cases. The process for the child abuse and neglect cases are different. For the juvenile law violation cases, it could be as simple as one appearance, where there is admission, child's put on, not on any court status. Otherwise, if it goes through trial, can we try to set those trials expeditiously? It could be a couple of months. They're placed on probation, and there are motions that happen. It could be a year or so. There are waiver, you know, waiver cases where a child is charged with a criminal offense, an offense that would be a crime if committed as an adult. Those cases can be very intense and take a little bit longer, so I mean, anywhere from the initial appearance to a year plus. It varies, yeah. In the child abuse and neglect cases, those cases can take much longer.
So it'd be fair to say that by saying yes to these cases as a court-appointed attorney, you might be locked in for years?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, and if you're appointed, you need leave of court to withdraw.
So you have to ask the court for a motion to find another attorney?
Yes. And, yeah.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on. Thanks very much. Next, House Bill 1914 relating to compensation for court-appointed counsel, and this is for court-appointed counsel in criminal proceedings. It also appropriates funds and includes the language that the appropriation exceeds the state general fund expenditure for 2425. On this measure, we have Mr. Ben Lowenthal, Office of the Public Defender.
Good afternoon, committee members, Chair, Vice Chair, Ben Lowenthal. I am at the public defender's office. We are in strong support of this bill, I should add. Before I was a public defender, I spent 10 years in private practice, and a big chunk of my practice was with court-appointed work at a rate of $90 an hour. It has been the rate for my entire career. It has been the rate for as long as I can remember. My practice was centered mainly on Maui, and so that was the going rate. What we have seen over time is by keeping the rate as it is, less and less private counsel, who are an essential part of our criminal justice system, to represent co-defendants, to represent people that the public defender's office cannot for legal reasons and ethical reasons. When that pool shrinks, the quality of representation goes with it. It is, frankly, it is very dire on the neighbor islands. On Maui, it is not uncommon for judges, for weeks, sometimes months, on the heavy cases, to constantly call and ask attorneys from other islands to come, and at a rate of $90 an hour, it is not feasible. And so we stand on the testimony. I am available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ronald Johnson, Deputy Chief Judge in the judiciary. Oh, no, or, or someone else who's representing the judiciary.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members. Obviously, I am not Judge Johnson. My name is Jennifer Wong. I'm the staff attorney for the criminal divisions. Unfortunately, Judge Johnson had a hearing this afternoon and he could not make it. For the most part, we do stand on our testimony. We strongly support this bill. It is part of the judiciary's package. This measure will greatly aid in recruiting and retaining competent and qualified counsel willing to be appointed in criminal proceedings. I did want to make one correction to our testimony. The current federal rate right now actually went up January 1st, 2024. So for non-capital cases, it is now $174 an hour, and it is $220 an hour for capital cases. The last time a rate approval was approved by the legislature was in 2005, and that raised that rate to $90 an hour. And at that time, it matched the federal rate. Since that time, the federal rate has been raised 17 times, and it has not been raised a single time here in the state. To address something that was brought up yesterday in the Senate Committee, $150 an hour, which is what we're asking for, is not the going rate for defense work in the private sector. We are still not going to match what private defense councils can make if they weren't and got their own clients and represented them privately. But it will hopefully make a good faith effort to show them and to try and get them in to get on our list, apply on our list, and do the public work, combined with the $150 an hour, that will hopefully get us more qualified applicants onto our court-appointed list. Oh, and to second what Ben was saying, I often get phone calls from the chief judges of the outer islands, asking me, hey, Jen, have you added anybody to the murder list on the court-appointed on Oahu because we really need somebody? And we haven't, and I can't give them any names. So other than that, I'm available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in support from Wendy Hudson. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on 1914? If not, questions, members? Representative Ganneden.
Mr. Lowenthal.
Yes.
You know, $90 seems like a lot of money to the average person who works for an hourly pay. Could you explain to the committee how lawyers bill? So I mean, like, in what increments and how lawyers are taught to ethically track their billing, and whether or not court-appointed attorneys are allowed to bill for extraneous things, travel, those kinds of things?
Sure. While it may seem like a lot at an hourly rate, the way court-appointed attorneys or private counsel bills is they do it by the hour, but the way they keep track of their time is, it's been 10 years, it's been six years, but it was down to five-minute intervals. And so writing a letter is a fraction of that, and you need to be very careful about the time spent. It is highly regulated. You can't double bill for clients, can't include the time for travel. It is time actually spent working. When it comes to court-appointed work, those requests are sent in similar to the bill before this, where the judiciary will scrutinize, take a look carefully at the time spent on a particular case, and in many cases, it does not come out to the full hour, almost unless you're in court, unless you're in court or something to that effect, you're day-to-day. It's fractions and fractions and fractions of that hour. I hope that answers the question as I could.
A brief follow-up, Chair. So let's say for a misdemeanor violation, in which you have two or three appearances, and you have to make several phone calls to your client, to the probation officer, and to the state, you might be not even racking up, let's say, three hours or four hours on these cases, even though you've made several appearances. Is that correct?
That's right, and your billable time is going to be very different than your actual time, right? So the three hours in your example is what you get paid for. It does not include the time sitting in court waiting, and that's time where you can't be devoted towards other clients, and that does not include a lot of the other time. So the rule of thumb, more or less, is if you're looking at the billable time, the actual time is usually twice, sometimes three times as much of actual time spent on a case.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, members? If not, thank you. Let's move on. House Bill 1915 relating to the Uniform Probate Code. This updates the Uniform Probate Code by reducing the number of required publications a notice to creditors by a trustee to once a week for two successive weeks, consistent with the amendments made by Act 158 of Session Laws of Hawaii 2023, to publication requirements applicable to probate matters generally. On this measure, we have a representative of Jeanette Castignetti, Chief Judge, First Circuit in the judiciary, Mr. Jeffrey Niebling. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair and committee members. Yes, my name is Jeffrey Niebling. I'm testifying on behalf of Judge Castignetti and the Judiciary Committee for the Uniform Probate Code and Probate Court Practices. This bill is to correct an oversight in the bill that was passed last session. Due to an oversight, one notation was missed, changing the publication requirement that's applicable to successive trustees, as that's in a different paragraph that is applicable to estates generally. Just a technical amendment, but if you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
I'm sorry. Are you making a recommendation for an amendment to this measure?
No, no, sorry, Your Honor. Chair, not an amendment to this measure, but the act itself is an amendment to the probate code.
Yes, the bill is an amendment to the probate code. Yes, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in support from Carolyn Nicole. Welcome. Floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, and members of the committee, Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee. My name is Carolyn Nickel. I'm a retired attorney and former probate court registrar, testifying as an individual. I stand on my written testimony, but briefly would like to call your attention to three areas where Act 158 falls short: time limits, original wills, and attorney fees. Act 158 replaced an awkwardly worded paragraph, A4, within Section 3108, but made unnecessary revisions inconsistent with definitions and policies adopted by the Uniform Law Commissioners. As to original wills, I'm going to quote from the Uniform Law Commissioner's comment on Section 3303. Except where probate or its equivalent has occurred previously in another state, informal probate is available only where an original will exists and is available to be filed. HRS Section 563303, as amended by Act 158, allows the registrar to admit a copy of a will filed but not probated in another jurisdiction. Admission of a copy of a will not probated elsewhere should be decided by the judge, not a registrar. And as to attorney's fees, please consider whether HRS Section 563720, as amended by Act 158, may result in improper windfalls to attorneys and clients to the detriment of a decedent's intended beneficiaries. My March 15th, 2023 testimony before this committee, which was in writing, not in person, set forth legislative history, uniform laws, and Hawaii case law germane to this topic. I've attached a draft House Bill Number 1915 proposed HD1 that addresses these three matters. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comprehensive review and recommendations. And we have testimony in support from Lonnie Ewer, Commission to Promote Uniform Legislation. Is there anyone else here or online wishing to testify on this measure? House Bill 1915. If not, questions, members? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much. House Bill 1917 relating to collective bargaining. This measure appropriates monies for collective bargaining cost items for judiciary employees and their excluded counterparts, and declares that the appropriation exceeds the general fund expenditure ceiling for 2425. First up, we have testimony from Mr. Tanigawa of the judiciary. Or Mr. Kamura from the judiciary.
I'll speak for this Chair. Thank you.
Yes, certainly.
Fran Kamora, Director of Policy and Planning, Judiciary. This is a measure that, as you stated, is for collective bargaining pertaining to the temporary hazard pay with the unions during the pandemic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we have testimony from Kalani Werner with UPW.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Kamakana Kamala, Government Affairs Manager for UPW. You have our written testimony, which I think would be clear that we are in strong support of. What this bill does is actually secures funding for the settlement agreement that we reached with the judiciary last year for members. That settlement agreement is contingent upon the availability of funds from the legislature. You know, our members have been waiting almost two years for the temporary hazard pay that they earned during the COVID-19 pandemic, and we hope that you will pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members? Representative Ganneden.
As I'm sure you realize, the legislature is actively discussing how much is going to be in the budget this year. Of your members, how many that will be getting this hazard pay, that deserve this hazard pay, have since retired?
That, we don't know, but the total amount of members, former and active, is actually like 188 members, so it isn't a considerable amount of folks. That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions, members? A question for the judiciary. Do you have any estimate as to its amount, or when do you think you might have that estimate? We're trying to figure out our budget and need to plan.
I think we'll need to, oh, can we get back to you, Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, please do.
Will do. Thank you.
Any other questions, members? If not, we'll move on. Thank you. Next is House Bill 1965 relating to abusive litigation, establishes a court's authority to issue an order restricting abusive litigation. First up, we have Judge Viola. Next, we have testimony from Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks, Ho Wu. Next, we have testimony from Angelina Mercado. Welcome. Floor is yours.
Nice to be back.
Oh, it's so nice of you to say that.
It's nice to have one committee referral, right? Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. I'm Angie Mercado, the Executive Director of the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence. You should have an amended testimony before you with some recommended amendments to the bill language, but I just wanted to first summarize for you what this measure is intending to do, specifically with our survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking, which are all forms of intimate partner violence. What this measure is attempting to address is what is actually already happening in our courts, not here, but in other courts across the country, and also follow along the legislation which other states have passed. There are a total of five states that have passed some form of abusive litigation legislation, and it's to address the weaponization of our judicial system by former, or actually still probably concurrent in some instances, abusive partners for these survivors. And so what we concurrent in some instances, abusive partners for these survivors. And so what we... You will also see in your testimony from some survivors who have submitted, as well from our member programs on Kauai, on Domestic Violence Action Center, you will see that this has a detrimental impact on survivors of domestic violence, stalking, and sexual assault, who thought that the abuse was over. This leads to additional emotional abuse. What the party is intending to do is constantly bring this person back into court, back into contact with the abusive partner, so they can see them. They have to be there, next to them, in proximity. Their family members have to be there. They have to be witness to their family members harassing them as well, exerting all of this, as well as making them incur additional court fees and attorney's fees. Most of these are civil lawsuits, and as Representative Gannon pointed out, and us other members of the judiciary have pointed out, private attorneys are not at $90 an hour. So the impact on survivors who may have the money to do this is that they run out of money fast, or they go into debt, or they go into debt so bad they have to make a choice, "I'm just going to have to, like, deal with this," or give up and somehow still be in contact with my abusive partner. This has a profound economic impact on our community as well. Survivors are not able to go back into work. They have childcare costs. They have transportation costs as well. So what this bill addresses to do is also allow the courts to be able to award, if they find that the litigant before them is abusive, not only have pre-filing requirements for that person. So we're not saying you can't come to court. Not saying that you don't have the right to come to court, but if you've been deemed an abusive litigant, we're going to review what that is. And if you've been found to have been an abusive litigant for that case right there, you're going to pay transportation, course, costs, attorney's fees, court fees, et cetera. So my proposed amendments addresses something that actually is occurring in our family courts. The fact that we want to make sure that the respondent has been found to have been an abuser of domestic violence, for instance, but what's actually... What we're finding is that, especially at the advice of an attorney, a respondent will just agree to the protection order, even though... So there will be granted a protection or a permanent protection order without a finding of domestic abuse. We can look at a lot of cases recently in the news where if we looked hard at those protection orders, there weren't findings of domestic abuse, but they agreed to the protection order. So those are the first three amendments. We also want to make sure that all the charges of stalking are included therein.
If you could summarize, it'd be great.
And I think you have it all in front of me. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to address them. You know where I sit.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Judge Viola, could I go back to you? This is on House Bill 1965. If you could provide your testimony, that'd be great.
I was hoping that we could submit on our written testimony, which I think is what we did, but if...
Well, no, I think your recommendation is very germane. You want... You're suggesting that we should use House Bill 2657 instead of this measure, and if you could explain why?
Yeah, I think partly because we... I think, like we said in our testimony, I think this is a sound bill. We recognize this is an issue that does need to be addressed. I think the companion bill, the other bill, is based on a couple of state statutes that have already been enacted, so that we'll be able to kind of draw from their experience of, like, the Washington State and the Tennessee statutes. And I think, just frankly, we drew some of the language from this bill that we proposed some amendments to the other bill, but we think that the other bill may be a little bit more streamlined, a little bit more clear to understand. I think in any of these bills, the biggest concern is that try to figure out what all of the unintended consequences may be, and whether abusers will be able to take advantage of a bill like this. I think the experience from those other jurisdictions may be helpful, if that is the vehicle that moves forward.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted the committee to hear that from you, because that's an essential part of your testimony. Okay, thank you, Judge. Appreciate it. And we have also testimony and support from Lynn Costales Matuoka, the Sex Abuse Treatment Center. Testimony from Dennis Dunn in support. Is there Dennis Dunn? Please proceed, Mr. Dunn.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas and Chair Takayama. Vice Chair Takayama, members of the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. My name is Dennis Dunn. I'm the retired Director of the Victim Witness. Cocua services in the Honolulu Prosecutor's Office. It is through that lens of my 45-plus years of assisting crime victims that I'm testifying in strong support of House Bill 1965. The provisions of this bill would create legal procedures to protect victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking from vicious and vindictive courses of litigation designed to harass and terrorize them. These legal attacks initiated by perpetrators of violence and threats against our often sophisticated attempts to continue their abuse, power, and control long after the criminal conduct itself was initiated for the same purpose. Through custody litigation, small claims, and other legal maneuvers, the perpetrators of abuse manufacture the means to maintain contact and inject disarray and uncertainty into the lives of their victims. Litigation abuse can go on for years. It is often extended to the family, friends, and coworkers of a victim in an effort to intimidate others from offering support and assistance to the victim. Abusive litigants also waste judiciary resources and ultimately employ public tax dollars to assist them in their nefarious courts of conduct. This bill would permit a survivor of domestic abuse, sexual violence, and stalking to assert a claim of abusive litigation if the party filing the litigation was previously an intimate partner or a family or household member has been found to have committed an act or acts of abuse, sexual assault, or stalking. Under this bill, a finding by the court must also be made by the presiding judge that the filing party's claims, allegations, or other legal contingents are not supported by the evidence, or that the issue presented was previously disposed of unfavorably to the party putting forth the claim.
Thank you.
I'm trying to sum it up now. So we believe that this measure will allow those individuals who are subjected to abuse or litigation after going through other efforts such as restraining order, criminal prosecution, and divorce, thinking that their efforts have been successful, allows abusers to continue this using the legal system. Victims are devastated by this. I've worked with a number who've had to put up with this after going through successful prosecutions and divorces, and this essentially uses our... Allows our legal system to be used against victims. I would strongly suggest that you support this measure, pass it out of committee. I do support the amendment suggested by Angie Mercado from the State Coalition and other reasonable amendments that might be made. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dunn. Next, we have testimony and support from numerous individuals: Genia Stith, Mia Carroll, Monique Barra, Kyle Shelley, Derek Carlin, Luana Peterson, Sean Benton, Jay Lise Ranesses, and comments from Shana Wailana Kukila. Is there anyone else here or online wishing to testify on House Bill 1965? If not, questions, members?
I have a question for Judge Viola.
Thank you.
So my initial question is, how is it determined if there's abusive litigation going on? Is that in the subjective opinion of the court? Like, how does that work?
Well, currently, we don't have a... There is a vexatious litigant statute. I mean, I think this bill lays out certain criteria. I think by its nature, there will be some ambiguities. I'm hoping that we're not to... There's some level of, we have to determine what the intent was, I think, in this bill in particular. There should be some objective criteria. I think this bill does lay out some objective criteria. To Chair Tarnas's point before, I think there is another bill. I believe it's got a hearing in front of the Senate Committee tomorrow that I think may be a little bit more clear, a little bit less subjective. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Somewhat, yes. And also, just another question. So I know that the vexatious litigant... There's a vexatious litigant statute, right, currently in place. So as far as the current power of the court, is it within the court's discretion currently to combat a lot of the issues that this bill tries to... Or the objective of the bill essentially, as far as, can't the court just make these determinations currently and not have it under the umbrella of being an abusive litigant? You know, like, throwing out cases, you know, for meritorious reasons, or whatever the court feels, if the court does feel that it's being used in an abusive way?
The vexatious litigant statute is one vehicle. That's got its limitations, frankly. It applies to plaintiff's...
I guess the question is, is it necessary? You know, does the court currently have, within its discretion, the ability to determine if litigation is being used in an abusive way?
So we do have some rules, you know, that attorneys... That's filed by an attorney. Rule 11, which means you have to have a good faith basis to file a motion. Maybe I can give you an example of how things have changed. We used to have a standard where... Because these issues, I think, frequently come up in custody matters. And we used to have some gatekeeping, so to speak, mechanisms that are no longer available to us, because there are some decisions by our Supreme Court that eliminate that. We usually have to have a hearing on the merits of many of these motions. If it's frivolous, not based in law or fact, we can dismiss a proceeding. But I think, to your point, I think we have to have hearings on most of these matters, and to make determination whether there's merit to that motion. Not every one... Every motion that's filed by someone who's been found to have been... To engage in domestic abuse or intimate partner violence will make an unmeritorious motion.
Right.
And especially in the custody context, your kids change.
Right.
Right? So in those orders, we'll always... We will have to amend our orders regularly to reflect changed circumstances. I think the... So if I can just maybe get right to the point of your question, I think there's a need for us to have better tools to reduce the amount of the litigation abuse that occurs. I think the challenge is to make sure that there is... The remedy is not over-inclusive or under-inclusive, and frankly, I think the real challenge is, you know, when you're talking about too much litigation, not to combat too much litigation by more complex litigation.
Right.
So I don't know if that's helpful.
Thank you. I'm just worried about the unintended consequences, like you mentioned. So thank you so much for your explanation. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions, members? If not, let's move on. Thanks very much. House Bill 1608 relating to the Office of the Public Defender. This appropriates monies for four FTE Deputy Public Defender positions within the Office of the Public Defender, and requires that one of the positions be assigned to the Family Court section. We have testimony and support from the Office of the Public Defender. Mr. Loenthal.
Good afternoon again. I'm Ben Loenthal. The Public Defender, John Ikanaga, is off island. He is currently visiting with deputies on Maui today, and so I wanted to update this committee as to the Senate equivalent of this bill that occurred yesterday. The update is... I believe the Senate is working on amending it so that there would be four positions of PD3s, and that a PD2 would remain in the Family Court. I don't know of that... What impact that would have on the language of this particular bill, but I believe that's the position that they're working on, at least on the Senate side of it. And the rationale of this is that we're looking at flexibility and need, and right now, a lot of the need, particularly with the neighbor islands, is not in the PD, Public Defender 2 position, but the Public Defender 3 positions for the neighbor islands. Those would be so that the people who are currently at the office can be moving up to the higher bracket and handling felony cases. We are obviously and strongly in support of a bill like this, and we do believe that there should be a degree of flexibility within the Office of the Public Defender, so that those decisions can be made. And I'll just summarize it with this, is that as we create new offenses, we create new specialty courts, but if we do not consider the positions at the Public Defender's office, it does put a strain on the system as a whole. And so we believe it is an essential part as we move forward to keep the office funded, to keep the office fully staffed, or staffed to maximize representation as we move forward. I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure, here or online? If not, questions, members? Just a quick question for the Office of Public Defender. The language in the bill refers to deputy public defender position. So I think in the budget, as we work through that, we will have to have the specifics on that. So it would be beneficial for us to understand that specifically, so that when we do work with finance, as it moves on, you'll need to provide that sort of information to them, because those will be in the budget worksheets.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that's probably the best way for us to proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No further questions on this. We'll go forward to House Bill 1626 relating to a probation compliance credits program. Requires the judiciary to establish a compliance credits pilot program for probationers that comply with their conditions of supervision. First up, we have... Let's have Darcia Forrester, Office of the Public Defender.
Aloha again, Chair Tarnas and members of the committee. The Office of the Public Defender strongly supports the creation of a probation compliance credit program. So we do support the measure. Obviously, they would be starting from scratch to create something, creating standards. They're going to need to look at what offenses would apply, what offenses would not apply. But we do think creating an incentive program would be an excellent way for us to focus the probation office on the clients who need help and assistance because they're struggling, versus having probationers who are serious, and believe it or not, we do have probationers who are serious. They take their obligations serious. They get enrolled. They take their classes. They pay their fines and fees. They've got their restitution paid. And for the probationers who do everything that they need to do, we don't necessarily need to keep them on the rolls for another three, or two, or even extra year just because. So what we like about the creation of this type of program is we can focus the probation's resources on the people who need it, the people who are struggling with mental illness, the people who maybe aren't following the rules, and they need the microscope on them. So it's really a way of focusing the microscope for the probationers in need versus the probationers who have already taken their obligations seriously. So we are in strong support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from the judiciary. Welcome. Please introduce yourself and proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas and Vice Chair Takayama. Brooke Mami Zuka, Probation Administrator for the First Circuit Court. The written testimony is a representation of the statewide courts and probation offices. Probation recognizes that a longer term of probation is not necessarily the best way to manage workload and our clients. Currently, we have a mechanism in place to filter high and low-risk supervision. We conduct assessments and reassessments to divide workload and intensive supervision, medium and low supervision. We devote our services to high-risk and high-need individuals. The studies taken in 2014 and 2020 showed that the probation terms are five years or more. Probation has evolved in the last four years. We've become stronger at evidence-based practices and efficient at managing client services. One good purpose of... One purpose of the good time serve case reduction is the process that is in place. In the fiscal year 2021 and 2022, we had 1,146 cases, and in fiscal 2022 and '23, we've released 954 clients. I'll quote my counterpart on the Big Island: "Probation is not black and white, nor is it about compliance and noncompliance. It's about helping our clients address deep-seated unresolved issues." The content of supervision is more relevant than the term of probation. Our clients are unpredictable. Some of our clients respond to the first episode of treatment. For others, it'll take several missed appointments, several positive drug tests, and it may take several terms of treatment episodes, until they're at that point that they're ready to change. We look at an individual as a whole. We're in the business of changing behavior to make long-time life changes. We respectfully recommend looking at or in... We rec, we respectfully recommend at looking at or enhancing or expanding the current early discharge policy, creating a standardized practice of early termination of probation. Halfway through the probation term, at usually two years, a predetermined hearing would be held. Clear goals would be set to allow our clients to know how they obtain early termination. Much like treatment courts, the hearing, the attorneys, probation officers and the court decide if early termination is, can be granted. This will remove the burden from the public defenders, the attorneys, the courts and the probation office. Good time credit relies on the compliance with the court-ordered conditions completing treatment as it would appear to be the most concrete formula to reduce time from a sentence. However, other factors should be considered. We're not against the pilot, but we need to know how to reduce the terms while the public sa, while still maintaining public safety and protecting probation if there's some reoffense that does occur after early termination. We're open to the pilot program that standardizes review, a review process halfway through the pilot. We would, uh, we would be open to further discussion of the possibility of good time credit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have testimony from Kat Brady, Community Alliance of Prisons. That's all the testimony we received on this measure. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on House Bill 1626? If not, questions, members? Representative Gannon.
Ms. Mami Zuka from the judiciary. Not just in this session, but in previous sessions, uh, we have discussed with the judiciary and other agencies that deal with criminal defendants, the ways that, um, I guess government has sort of been siloed off. Uh, so judiciary sometimes doesn't know what the Department of Public Safety does, doesn't know what, um, county police does, doesn't know what probation does, these kinds of Considering that, uh, does a probation officer ever assist a defendant with filing a motion to reconsider or for a motion for termination of probation and assist a defendant in their ability to get off of probation early?
No, we refer them to the, the public defender's office.
And if they cannot afford, um, private counsel or if the office of the public defender declines to, uh, assist them with these motions to end their probation early, uh, they have no further recourse?
We have in the past filed a motion for early discharge or dismissal for them.
Is it within the ability for a probation officer to do this or is it a cultural thing in which probation officers don't do this?
Um, we do have the ability to do that, but we, we don't practice it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, members? Vice Chair?
I can stay up there, please, Ms. Mami Zuka. Thank you for being here. And thank you for your testimony. In your testimony, you, you stated that, um, in the current program of so-called early release, you, um, allowed 954 clients to receive early release?
Yes.
Uh, this is out of, how many probationers are there in the system?
Right now, there's 15,000.
So about a fewer than a thousand out of 15,000. Pardon my math, but that's about 7% of your total probation population. Would you say that, is it fair to say that more than 7% of your probationers are in compliance with their terms of probation?
Um, I would have to look at, at that to see if there's more than 7% that's in compliance.
So you think there may be as few as 7% of 15,000 probationers who are in compliance with their terms of probation?
Um, not fewer. There might be more, but I don't know how much more.
Okay. Are you aware of a recent, uh, report by the Pew Institute that said that, um, most states average two to three years, uh, in average length of probation, whereas Hawaii averages five years and we are the longest in the nation in that regard?
Yes.
And are you also aware that one of the problems this report points out is that with longer terms of probation, there is more likelihood that probationers will get in trouble on technical violations?
Yes.
And so what would send a technical violator to jail? I mean, it's my understanding that we have several hundred in O triple C at this moment incarcerated because of technical, technical violations of probation. What would trigger a technical violation?
Several missed appointments, um, several positive drug tests, um, and failure at treatment. And it might not just be one episode, it might be several.
Okay. So, but not a criminal violation because that would be different. You're talking about missed appointments or bad drug tests.
Yes.
There was also a, a report by the Council on State Governments that reported that 60% of those who are serving probation in Hawaii of more than three years are, quote, "low-risk" probationers. In other words, do not seem to pose a threat of violence or harm to the community. Would you say that this is pretty accurate?
Um, I can't say. I would have to look into it.
I guess finally, I, to get to the point of the current system versus the proposal in this measure, um, would you say that one of the, the drawbacks of the current system is that it requires a probationer to, to seek defense counsel, to have the case, uh, reexamined and, and the probation term reduced?
Yes.
And so your proposal to reopen cases halfway through the term of probation wouldn't change that circumstance, would it?
Um, it would just bring the case before the court quicker.
But the probationer would still have to absorb the cost of attorneys, which we've heard previously can be several thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay. Finally, I just wanted to ask if I, I'm disappointed that you are in opposition to the, the measure before us, but would you be open to a study of the proposal that you've offered versus what's done in other states that do offer, uh, good time or, or, um, compliance credits? Would you be open to a study of such a, um, matter?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm very open to, um, looking at new ways that we're doing probation.
Okay. Um, no more questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Other questions, members? Representative Gannon?
Just like to clarify, I didn't see it in the pre-amb. There are over 15,000, uh, people in the state of Hawaii that are currently on probation?
Yes.
All right. Would you, would it be fair to say that probation officers are overwhelmed by managing this caseload?
Yes.
And would it be fair to say that it is very easy to miss an appointment with an overwhelmed probation officer?
It would be easy for the...
For it, for a probationer to miss an appointment with a probation officer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? If not, thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Let's move on to the next measure relating to civil legal services. Requires and appropriates monies for the judiciary to develop a three-year civil legal services pilot program to provide civil legal services at no cost to eligible parties. Requires reports to the legislature prior to the convening of regular sessions in 2025, 2026 and 2027. First up, uh, we have testimony from the State Procurement Office, Bonnie Kahakui with comments. Next, we have testimony from the judiciary, Mr. Rod Miley. Welcome. Please proceed. Thank you for your patience.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The judiciary is in support of the intent of this bill. We had, um, noted some, uh, potential amendments based on our understanding of the requirements of the procurement code. We note from, um, the procurement office, um, testimony that they did not have the same concerns, so we would defer to their interpretation of the, um, and I believe that they have, um, non-substantive or, or relatively modest revisions that they're proposing. We're not opposed to those. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we have testimony and support from Kimmy I. Anyone else wishing to testify on 2234? If not, questions, members? Let me just be a clear, Mr. Miley. So, uh, you would defer to the recommendation from the State Procurement Office and their testimony as being sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Oh, Representative Gannon.
For Mr. Miley with the judiciary. Sorry for having you walk back up. In the instance, um, an individual is, um, has some sort of a civil, uh, legal case against them, say in the family court, um, or in some other civil case, um, but they might have some sort of ongoing mental health issues. Of course, can they get a public defender or would they be referred to one of the, uh, nonprofit legal service providers that we've articulated in this section?
My understanding is that the jurisdiction for the Department of the Public Defender, the Office of the Public Defender, is limited to criminal, uh, charges. There are some things that might arguably fall within that, but my understanding is for civil matters, they would have to get counsel, um, in other places.
In consideration of, uh, recent moves by the governor to, uh, and by the legislature to expand, uh, mental health treatment, uh, in our community and mental health treatment and placement, would this bill, um, uh, support, uh, those moves by the government?
It would depend. This is a pilot program and depending on, um, given the service providers that are identified in the bill itself, they have their own internal restrictions as well as the types of cases that they would be able to take. So I believe that would probably be the answer to your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, members? If not, thanks very much, Mr. Miley. Let's move on to our final measure on our agenda, House Bill 2570. Oh, you, you want to testify? Hold on a sec. Let me tell, tell folks what it's about. It's relating to attorneys. Requires petitions or motions for a pro hoc vicie appearance for a court proceeding or arbitration proceeding to be supported by evidence of the applicant's and local council's Hawaii business registrations, the applicant's and local council's Hawaii general excise tax license numbers, an affirmation that both the applicant and local council will pay all state income tax due for Hawaii business activities and all other information or documentation required by the rules of the Supreme Court of the state of Hawaii. So first up, we have the judiciary.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share with the committee that, uh, Mr. Berger is not able to join us this afternoon, so we would submit on his written testimony. Thank you.
And do you want us, would you be able to summarize the testimony?
Um...
Because it's, I mean, you're opposing the bill.
I, I don't have the, uh, the thorough understanding to provide that, I believe.
Okay. That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have testimony with comments from Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We can't hear you, sir. You might want to adjust your microphone. There you are. Now we hear you.
Okay. Great. Um, the, uh, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Our main concern is that as presently drafted, the bill creates a separation of powers issue because the, uh, the judiciary, uh, has the constitutional right to adopt their own rules. And I don't think the legislature or any other coeval branch of government has, uh, has the power to make them change or adapt their rules, however you can pass statutes. And, uh, I think if, if that issue is addressed, I think the, uh, subject matter and contents of the, of the bill are fine.
Thank you.
I have to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Marilyn Niwau, Hawaii Association of Public Accountants. Please proceed.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Um, sorry. I'm Marilyn Niwau. I'm, um, longtime CPA and attorney practicing in public accounting on Maui. And I am the immediate past president of the Hawaii Association of Public Accountants and currently state director and, um, co-chairman of the legislative committee. I'm also the immediate past vice chair of the Hawaii Council on Revenues and a former commissioner of the Hawaii Tax Review Commission. Um, I saw the problem here, um, based upon the experience of HAPA, Hawaii Association of Public Accountants, when it, uh, investigated the out-of-state compliance for CPAs. And we found in the past that there were 70% of the, um, out-of-state CPA firms were not compliant with Hawaii taxes. They had no G E T, um, in which to pay Hawaii general excise taxes. And, and so this was a, a big issue. Um, so when this lawsuit, you know, the Maui fires came through and the, the size of the lawsuits were so great, I thought, well, you know, I bet you the, uh, out-of-state attorneys are in the same boat, that they, uh, don't realize that the Hawaii general excise tax is different from the other states, you know, where we, we tax a lot on gross service income and, um, well, we have, I guess, in that sense, higher taxes. We, we, we tax on rental income or we tax on service income. So I, I, my concern is that there's no compliance, um, by the out-of-state attorneys with Hawaii laws that currently exist on the books. Hawaii revised statute already provides that the items that were requested, which is providing the general excise tax or signing up for a general excise tax and registering your business and, um, all of that and paying your, uh, Hawaii net income tax on your net income. Those are already requirements on the Hawaii revised statutes. And if you look at Rule I dash nine F and G of the Supreme Court rules, it says that there's going to be an affirmation that the applicant will comply with all applicable Hawaii statutes, laws and rules of the court. And the problem I have here is that last night I went and looked online and, uh, looked at the, the firms that were advertising. And this is, you know, I spent four hours looking at it and, uh, looking up, uh, the firms that were practicing in Hawaii and, in conjunction with, uh, teaming up with a, a local, uh, law firm and found that out of 15 firms that I sampled, only one had a general excise tax. And if they were going to be coming to Hawaii and, and soliciting clients and, um, doing business here, they're required to get the Hawaii general excise tax. They're required to do, um, get the business registration. They're required to pay their state income taxes. And so this is not something that is different. I don't view this as a different, uh, qualification. It basically emphasizes that the attorneys, the out-of-state attorneys, would have to pay what's already on the books. You know, this is already, um, the Hawaii revised statute already says what the tax laws are and it applies to out-of-state attorneys also.
Thank you very much. If you could summarize, that would be great.
Yeah. So I think that having this and just changing this, um, application form that the, um, Supreme Court has issued can be done so, so it would, uh, solve the problem with respect to compliance with the existing Hawaii revised statutes. So if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, uh, comprehensive... Thank you very much, I appreciate your comprehensive review and testimony. Next, we have Denise Yoshida, Hawaii Association of Public Accountants in support, John Roberts with Niwau and Roberts in support, CPA Eric Masuda, CPA in support, Brian Iwata in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on HB 2570? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, thank you very much, thank you very much, Ms. Niwau. We're going to go on into decision-making now. Let's go back up to the top of the agenda, thanks members for being back here for decision-making. We are going to start with House Bill 1911. This is the judiciary budget. I support the, my recommendation is to support the judiciary budget, the supplemental budget for the 2325 biennium. We do have to make some technical amendments, and Finance Committee has asked us to defect the effective date to the year 3000, but that's going to be the only changes that we're going to make with this. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on House Bill 1911 with amendments, Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Eveslin, excused. Representative Gannon?
Aye.
Representative Holt?
Aye.
Representative Ichiyama, excused. Representative Iligan?
Aye.
Representative Kong?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Souza?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next measure, House Bill 1912. This relates to adding one additional district court judgeship in the First Circuit. This is a straightforward bill, it provides statutory authority for a position that we have already funded in the budget. My recommendation is to pass it out as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on House Bill 1912, passing as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Ichiyama. Any members voting nay or with reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1913, this is relating to compensation for court-appointed representation in family court. This is important to move forward. Finance Committee has asked that we produce an HD1, blank out the appropriation, put the appropriation into the committee report, and defect the effective date to the year 3000. That's my recommendation, questions or concerns? Representative Gannon?
Chair, I'm a court-appointed attorney, and I think I'm one of the few attorneys that's actually done a capital case in the state, so I checked in with the House Attorney regarding ethics and conflict, he said it was all right to vote on this.
I appreciate you declaring that, I think because you are, you've, I would agree with our own attorney's assessment of that, so please go ahead and vote.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on House Bill 1913, passing with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Ichiyama. Anyone voting with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1914, relating to compensation for court-appointed counsel, and this would be in criminal proceedings, same recommendation, House Draft 1, blank out the appropriation, put the appropriation into the committee report, and defect the effective date to the year 3000. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on House Bill 1914, passing with amendments, anyone voting with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next measure, House Bill 1915. I want to acknowledge the good work of Carolyn Nickel in analyzing this and making recommendations. I would like to actually take those recommendations to heart and see if we can do something, but I don't want to do it in this bill. I think we need to clean up this from what we had thought we had done last year, but I think what you're suggesting is more significant, and I'd like to do that separately. So my recommendation is to move this out as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on House Bill 1914, passing as is. Anyone voting W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1917, relating to collective bargaining, this for hazard pay for UPW workers within judiciary. I want to move this forward, this is money owed to them that is, we need to make good on, but the Finance Committee has requested that we move this out with a House Draft 1, blank out, well, the appropriation is already blank, and we'll defect the effective date to the year 3000, and we'll look forward to hearing from judiciary when you've calculated what the amount will be, and this will move on to finance. That's my recommendation. Questions or concerns, members? Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on House Bill 1917, passing with amendments. Anyone voting with reservations or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1965, this is very important that we get this right, to provide some additional statutory language that addresses abusive litigation so we can prevent it while making sure that it doesn't have unintended consequences. I appreciate Representative Souza's questions about that. I would like to use House Bill 2657 instead of this measure. I think, I'm persuaded that that would be a better vehicle and would cause less unintended consequences, so my recommendation is that we're going to schedule HB 2657 in a hearing soon so that we can meet the deadline, but in light of that, I'd like to defer this measure. Questions or concerns, members? Thank you, let's move on. House Bill 1608, relating to the Office of Public Defender, appropriates money for four FTE deputy public defender positions within the Office of Public Defender. I'd like to move this forward, and so my recommendation is finance, as requested, we blank out the appropriation, put the appropriation to the committee report, and defect the effective date to the year 3000. Questions or concerns, members?
Chair, before we vote, I need to ask a ruling on a potential conflict because my daughter works as a associate public defender, although she would not be directly affected by this measure.
Thanks for that disclosure. I think because she's in a class of employees and would not be affected by this, I don't think you have any conflict, so please go ahead and vote.
Thank you very much.
And tell your daughter, thank you for working for the public defenders. Any other questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on House Bill 1608, passing with amendments, anyone voting W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1626, personally, I feel we really need to do some work to try something new, and I appreciate your openness to looking at ways to do that. You've got a very tough job, and all the probation officers have a very challenging job, and the probationers themselves. We need to do everything we can to help them, and I appreciate that's where you're coming from as well. This measure, the Vice Chair took the lead on this, it was, you know, our first try to try to do something. I think it didn't quite hit the mark, so I would recommend we defer this measure, but request that you work with the Vice Chair and try to come up with some next step, that we can work together with you because we're allies, and we really want to do what's best for the probationers so that we can make the system work better. So I would like to defer this measure, but encourage you to work with Vice Chair on this one moving forward, okay? Questions or concerns, members? If not, let's move on. 2234, this one appropriates funds to judiciary to develop a three-year civil legal services pilot program to provide civil legal services at no cost to eligible parties. It's a good idea to move forward, I'd like to pass out, recommend we pass out a House Draft 1. I'd like to blank out the appropriation, put the appropriation to the committee report, defect the effective date to year 3000, and take the recommendation, the recommended amendments from the State Procurement Office. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on House Bill 2234 with amendments, anyone voting W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Final measure, this is clearly a problem that we need to address, and I appreciate Marilyn Niwau's analysis that it's real, it's not just imagined. I also appreciate that the rules of the Supreme Court could very much, could very well address this, but according to the testimony, no one's brought this issue up. And so for purposes of discussion, I want to move this forward. We've got questions, you know, Mr. Berger may have been able to answer them because it's just not something that I want to walk away from. So I would like to move this forward, Finance Committee is likely to move, have a hearing on this, I would encourage Mr. Berger to be there. This is, the sponsor of the measure is Chair of Finance Committee, and I know he wants to address this issue. So my recommendation is to defect the effective date to year 3000 and move this on to finance. Questions or concerns, members?
I have a concern, Chair.
Yes, please go ahead, Representative Souza.
So I'll be voting with reservations on this measure, just simply for the fact that on face value, it looks like a tax bill, and I completely understand all of the different explanations for the necessity of this. So I appreciate the objective, but I think that it is just more red tape for pro hoc vicie counsel, and especially in light of the major litigation, especially with the Maui wildfires, et cetera. I just don't want something like this to present as a deterrent as well, even though it sounds very simple as far as the requirements that the measure is trying to achieve, so just my two cents, thanks.
Appreciate your cautionary remarks and your concerns about that. We don't want to slow down any means of providing Maui victims of the wildfire with good legal representation. At the same time, I want to make sure everyone pays their taxes.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Other comments or concerns? Representative Gannon?
I'll be voting with reservations as well, noting the testimony of the judiciary, I think we were all, a lot of residents of Hawaii were concerned about what some people colloquially call ambulance chasing after the Maui wildfires and what looked like a cash grab by outside law firms. So the concerns are real, but also noting the testimony in the judiciary that we might be able to handle this with rules.
Yes, understood, understood. Well, you can tell Mr. Berger that everyone is cheering for him to address this in rules. In the meantime, we'll move it forward for further discussion to finance, and he can tell Finance Committee all the things he's doing to move this forward in rules. That'd be great. Okay, any other questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on House Bill 2570, noting the reservations of Representative Gannon and Representative Souza. Anyone other wishing, anyone else wishing to vote W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much, thank you everyone for being here today, thank you to the testifiers, you helped us do a better job. This hearing is now adjourned.